All right, we're calling the meeting now. We were getting a little clarification on something. So let's have Commissioner Russell give us the invocation.
Thank you, Commissioner Augustus. All right, here's most gracious heavenly father, thank you for giving us this wonderful day. Thank you for giving us this forum to come and do what we can to help our city, to assist in our city's growth. Please be with us tonight as we make decisions, as we consider what would be in the city's best interest, in your best interest, and what we can do to glorify your name. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. All right.
Commissioner Mashaw?
Here.
Commissioner Thorne?
Commissioner Art?
Here.
Commissioner Max?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Here.
Commissioner Skene?
Here.
Commissioner Neeson?
All right, has everyone had had opportunity to review the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Art?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Skene?
Aye.
All right, the first item is PL 1930, Wilkins, C2 rezoning. Request for zoning map amendment to five acres from AR to C2. The subject property is located on the north side of Christopher Lane, east side of Highway 51. George Reed, representing owner. Ms. Dugan, would you please present the planning staff report and comment?
I need to recuse myself.
Okay.
Can, may I ask a clarifying question? So what the discussion about the quorum and who was what we were going to be able to take up or not? Was there a decision that we're not going to be able to have a vote on number one because Shay is recusing?
Heard of the attorney.
I believe the decision at this time of caution is to table that. I think they can hear it, but I don't think they can make a decision on it. Technically, probably to hear it, probably if you want.
Yeah, can, I just request that if the decision is, I'm not saying for the record whether I agree or disagree. Okay? I'm just, but if the decision is you're not going to make a, do a vote tonight, barring anything else that might come up during the presentation, I'd rather do the presentation when we have a quorum. Because we'd effectively have to go through the same thing again to, for the missing person or the missing party.
Unless they review minutes.
Right, and then you can make it, you can do more legal research and determine that you can do this. I think you can, but that needs to be your decision.
If there's just, you don't get a, leave a caution.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Good, so let's just do a motion to...
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to table PL 1930, Wilkins, C2 rezoning until the board has a quorum.
I guess before we table it, I would like, if there's, people showed up for this, I do think we might. Did anybody show up other than Mr. Reedie? Okay, y'all, you did, okay. Are you, are, y'all understand what we're doing? We're going to continue this to the next meeting because we don't have enough commission. Can you be here that day? I would, if you can, I would hate to go forward without you.
It's going to be, it's going to be the second Tuesday again, the second Tuesday of, of next month at, at 6:00 PM. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, as long as you can do that, otherwise I would have said we might need to hear from you, okay?
That'll be the 11th, November the 11th.
Second. In that case, that's, I think that's where we were, sorry.
Yes, sir.
So we're tabling it to the specific date of November 11th?
Yes.
As long as, I guess Mr. Reedie's probably fine with that, so I'm sure he doesn't want to delay it anymore.
Uh, no, I've got a meeting I'm supposed to, she was bored, I mean, I'm supposed to be in Jackson on the 11th, so, you know, I'll just have to try to work it out. I mean, because I just don't see any...
That's Veterans Day, we will have the meeting, correct? But these veterans, it's a holiday.
TBD.
If we...
Tuesday is the...
Tuesday is...
It's Veterans...
November 11th is always Veterans Day.
Yeah, because we got a Veteran Day deal going.
Well, that's right, y'all, the city has an event that day.
Correct.
It might be moved to the 12th typically if we have something fall on the, the meeting date. It's moved to the Wednesday.
Would that help you?
It does me.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine, no problem.
Yeah, that would be preferable. I'm fine with November 12th if that's what we're going to do.
I think I'm comfortable in, in voting on tabling.
Yeah, that's not an issue.
Okay, good.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Art?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Skene? They're not hearing the application.
All right, the motion to table that item passes?
Maybe it'd be teased. Mr. Chairman, I'll be...
This year.
Can we all be excused?
Yeah, yeah, if you're done, yes. I would just recommend to follow up with the planning department. It's just to verify the date, so you can plan on being here.
Okay, thank you.
Kristen, are there, or they'll be able to help you with that?
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna jump down to, uh, the other one that looks like it's going to be table, PL 1931. Is there anybody here for the Miles Minor subdivision? Okay. All right, so we'll just go in order. The next item is PL 1934, 3140 Magnolia Drive. Request for fence variance to encroach into the required setback. The subject property is located on the east side of Magnolia Drive, north of Rin Street, more specifically 3140 Magnolia Drive. Austin Mask, the owner. Mr. Dugan, I mean, Ms. Dugan, you present the planning commission reporting comments.
Yes, so the applicant's requesting a fence variance to encroach into the side setback on a corner lot. The subject property is, as you said, east of Magnolia Drive, north of Rin Street at 3140 Magnolia Drive. With a fence variance, it's based on unnecessary hardships, and it's the, the criteria that have to be met or listed there in your staff report. Number one being that special conditions and circumstances exist that are peculiar to the land, structures, or buildings involved, and are not generally applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same district. Number two is that literal enforcement of the provisions of these standards would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties within the same district under the terms of this ordinance. And number three, the actions of the applicant are not, applicant are not based upon economic considerations. Number four, granting the variance requested would not confer on the applicant any special privileges that are otherwise denied by this ordinance to other land structures or buildings in the same district. If you look at the second exhibit in the staff report, you can see the drawing where the applicant is requesting to come out 35 feet from the side of the house onto Rin, towards Rin Street. That would be a 25-foot variance, or request for the variance. But the other unusual part of this application is that there is a patio or a sunroom on that side of the house that comes out 12 feet. So if you'll see where I think Austin had put in with additional 12-foot encroachment, so technically it's a 35-foot request, but it would be up to, you know, if the commission wanted to consider that sunroom as part of the structure of the home, it would only be a, about a 13-foot variance request. So it would be, 22 additional feet would be allowed from that 35 and 13-foot request. Other than that, you guys have any questions for me?
I think, is Mr. Austin Mask?
Here, to come to represent the case.
Come and fore and state your name and address in its entirety?
Good afternoon.
Name and address?
Austin Mask, 3140 Magnolia Drive.
Anything you'd like to add?
Other houses in the area, I've noticed, just walking the neighborhood and stuff, they've got more than 10 foot off the side of the house on a couple of different houses. I've got, I took some pictures of some of those on Google Maps, if y'all want to see those.
These are corner lots?
Yes, sir. I just feel like how our house is set back from the actual corner, we don't have a backyard, so that side yard, it's a nice flat area, and it would just be really nice to have it, to be able to use that space that we can, you know what I mean? And...
Yeah, I can remember a few recent, in recent years that we've done in that subdivision experiences and...
It seems to be far enough off to be visible.
Yeah.
I haven't been through there though.
I went through there and it's, it's not going to be a, any kind of line of sight or any kind of...
I went through there and I'm not sure, I agree, because right in front of like these three trees that are here, there's like a stone wall kind of situation because it's unlevel. So the house and like the property sits higher than the rest of the road. So you've got to consider that the fence is going to be taller. And when, when coming from Rin into Magnolia, I personally thought that it was going to obstruct view and driving through.
The trees are already there, take up so much space.
Right.
From what I saw, it wouldn't, the fence wouldn't be an obstruction of view at all. The trees do more damage than the fence would, as far as visibility.
The fence is going to be behind the trees, right?
Yes. But it's still, like, it's, it's, it would go tree fence, so then, and if you stop where you're supposed to at the stop sign, because the stop sign's not right there at the intersection, it's a little ways back, so if you stop where you're supposed to, if you move past the stop sign and stop at the actual intersection, you'll be able to see that traffic coming down Magnolia. But in my opinion, if you stop where you're legally supposed to at the actual stop sign, it, it's going to cause some obstruction of view.
So I can speak to this a little better. I actually live across the street. The way, the way the street is, is it's curved, so it doesn't come to a, to a point. So what she's saying is, is the stop signs are set back at least probably five feet from the corner. So, and I guess my only question is, are you, are you dead set on the 15 feet from the, from the sidewalk, or can, is it, can you, is there a little wiggle room to bump it away a little bit so the, so the line of sight isn't obstructed? I, I understood you wanting to not cut your, your patio in half, the seven foot coming off. That makes 100% sense. I, I'm just, like she said, I'm just worried about the line of sight. I think we spoke about that too.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess, are you asking for it to come from the patio or from the house? Because that would make a difference.
I measured 35 feet from the house.
35 feet from the house?
Yes, sir.
Is that what would leave the 15 feet, Kristen? I'm, I've got a little...
The 35 feet would leave 15 feet from the sidewalk to the proposed fence location.
Okay.
But that's where it goes straight.
The 12 feet from the, yeah. That's the additional 12 feet.
Right, the sunroom is about 12 feet out from the actual Rin line of the house.
Yep. If you look at the, if you look, if you're looking at the picture, prob, I would say probably right where the, the middle tree is, is probably right where the, the stop sign is located. So yeah, if you stopped there, you would probably have to like peek around the fence a little bit.
That was my point, like if you stop where you're required to. I mean, if you can stop there and then scoot up a little bit, I guess, and then look, but it seems silly.
So would the fence be the, is the issue, or is it the trees the line of sight issue?
I was about to say, so what's, what's with when the trees grow and, and branches start to cover visibility? Those trees are going to get bigger for sure.
If the trees are in the right way, the city will turn them.
Okay. I think they're already in this line of sight, some of them are.
Stop sign needs to be adjusted.
You can't. You see how, you see how the street's curved right there? Pretty much at the, right at the point before it turns. If you come any further in, it, it wouldn't be, the stop sign's already not real visible from there. They have two there, literally one on one side of the street and one on the other. It's, and then on the opposite side of the road, it's one on the side of the road and then the other side of the road, just to make it more visible when you're coming down that hill. So if you moved it any further, no one would be able to see that stop sign coming down that hill. If they get to moving down that hill, I can guarantee you I've lived there for a long time. But I under, I understand their concern, he wants a fence because he has small children, and that's kind of why, that used to be a two-way stop, and I requested stop signs to make it a four-way stop.
And this is an alleyway entrance house, so it does prohibit the rear door.
No, I'm glad, if Mr. Thorne was here, he'd be glad too. We get a lot of these, and a lot of them are after the fact.
That's exactly where you have to...
No, he's doing it right. You're doing it right. A lot of people just build fences and then don't say anything. So you're doing it, you're doing the right thing.
I got no issue with the fence, I just think it might be a little too much, going a little too far. Is, and then that's why I think Jerry was asking earlier, is there, is there a number that you can live with that's a little less than the 35 feet from the house?
Like maybe 30 feet, just to give a little bit of room?
The visibility for everybody coming through there.
Room for visibility?
Yeah, that, that's, that's the concern, is the visibility.
Yeah.
What if you, I mean, you could also maybe cut that corner off and have an angle that parallel the sidewalk? That'd be, that'd be probably the best compromise possible.
I'd be good with that. It's a good idea.
That was solid. Well done.
I guess we just need to decide where that, where that angle starts, you know? Feet from the house, so you angle it, I guess right behind the... Or I guess we could, we could maybe ask for Joe Frank to kind of weigh in on that. For you guys?
I mean, we can take a look at it and work with you on it.
Okay, I think I'm good with that. Like you had mentioned, is it a possibility to get the stop sign moved forward? Is it, I mean, is that an issue, it being moved as far back as it is?
I think you'd have to talk to the chief of police about that.
I'm sure there's some type of regulations.
Yeah, okay.
I guess maybe the easiest thing would do to, is, you know, he's 15 feet, so it's 15 feet from the sidewalk, right?
Yes, sir.
Turns right there, you can come up with a distance right there.
Hold, hold the 15 feet all the way around. Yeah.
Okay.
Think so too, and I think that's plenty, that's behind the trees, I think, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well, I think, would you be fine with that? It, because instead of saying, hey, let's just carry the 15 feet on the sidewalk, even, because the sidewalk turns right there, it just stays 15 feet right there.
Staying 15 feet away from the sidewalk all the way around the corner is what you're saying?
Right, but that'd just be the easiest way to...
With it angled?
Just that one corner right there.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
It's just going to be that one corner that's going to be, you know, you're going to have an angle. Going to kind of, the fence is going to kind of follow the design of the sidewalk.
Going to kind of, I think... You'll bring the fence out and then kind of angle it this way? Make sure that it's 15 feet.
Okay. If we did a sharp corner on that, on that corner, 15 feet from the sidewalk, would that be fine as well?
Yeah, round it around. That's what you're talking about, round it around instead of squaring it, right?
Right, I mean, it just, I would just see it being a straight, straight line. It would come out from the house straight and then angle, parallel to the sidewalk. Measure off that.
15 feet?
Yeah.
At an angle with the sidewalk, okay. And then stay...
It's just at that closest point, yeah.
Yeah, and that, it just cut, it doesn't cut off much.
Yeah.
So you're talking about like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions for that? Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Anyone have support against this item? Is there a motion to approve, deny, or table this item?
I make a motion to approve a fence variance to encroach into the required setback based upon the items listed below. Fence is described in the attached exhibits with the chain, the one change being 15 feet from the sidewalk all the way around. The subject property is located on the east side of Magnolia Drive, north of Rin Street, more specifically 3140 Magnolia Drive. Item's A3D.
Second.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Art?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashaw?
Aye.
Motion to approve this item passes? The next item, PL 1931, Miles Minor Subdivision, request for final plat approval to combine three lots into one lot of 5.46 acres. The subject property is located on the west side of Memphis Street, south of Green Tea. Kevin Miles, the owner. And this is the one we want to table too. So will we have a...
Making motion to table.
A second?
Second.
Until the, just until the next meeting?
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Art?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Skene?
Aye.
All right, the motion to table this item passes. The next item is PL 1933, New Age Logistics Phase 2. Request for final plat approval for New Age Logistics Phase 2 of one lot industrial subdivision, 30.72 acres. The subject property is located on the south side of Capic Road, west of Highway 51. Savannah Stoger, Kimberly Horn, representing their owner. Ms. Dugan, would you present the planning staff report and comments?
This is a final plat request for New Age Logistics. It's a property located on the south side of Capic, west of Highway 51. It is, it, it is an M1 zoning, and the planning commission, it was rezoned from planned, planned business park to M1 industrial zoning in 2020, and the board approved it in January of 2020. The first phase was Lot 1, which is where the AWG wholesale grocers is located, and that was approved by the planning commission in 2020 and the board of Alderman on October 20th of 2020. The applicant is requesting to create a one lot industrial subdivision of 30.72 acres, and the acts, they will access the site off of Capic Road and Highway 51 pending the approval from MDOT of that curb cut. If the planning commission recommends, or regardless of the recommendation, it will be heard by the board of Alderman on October 21st. Do you guys have any questions regarding this final plat?
All right, when the applicant please come forward and state your name and address in its entirety? in its entirety.
Good evening, Savannah Stoger with Kimberly Horn, address 6750 Poplar Avenue in Memphis, Tennessee. I don't have anything to add, but if y'all have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone support against this item? All right, is there a motion to approve, table, or deny this item?
I make a motion to grant approval for New Age Logistics Phase 2, one-lot subdivision on 30.72 acres, subject to staff comments, 1 through 18.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartz?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashaw?
Aye.
Commissioner C.
Motion to approve this item passes. The next item is PL 1939, Delta Landing Commercial Subdivision, Phase 7. Request for final plat approval of Delta Landing Commercial Subdivision, Phase 7, one lot, 9.52 acres. The subject property is located on the west side of McEnville Road, south of Pleasant Hill Road. The property is currently zoned PUD, Nick Krugan, Silver Link representing the owner. Ms. Duggan, present the planning staff reporting comments.
This, as Commissioner Hawkins said, is a final plat for a commercial subdivision at Delta Landing, Phase 7. It's 9.52 acres, zoned planned unit development, and it's located west side of McEnville Road, south of Pleasant Hill. The history of the... You guys are familiar with this development, you've heard several different subdivision applications for this. Originally Brighton Village, Planned Unit Development was renamed to Delta Landing in 2023, and we've had several... Several lots approved, both residential and commercial, in the Delta Landing development. The proposed subdivision substantially conforms with the preliminary approval for the Planned Unit Development, and the decision tonight will be heard at the October 21st Board of Aldermen meeting. Nick Cronin is present to represent the application. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Very much.
All right, when the applicant, please, come forward, state your name and address in its entirety.
I'm Alex Gagné, my address is 1058 Greenwich Drive, Hernando, Mississippi. I don't have anything to add unless y'all have any questions for me.
Anyone support against this item? All right, is there a motion to table, deny, or approve this item?
Motion to approve. I'd like a motion to grant final plat approval for Delta Landing, Phase 7, commercial subdivision consisting of Lot 1 lot of 9.52 acres, west of McEnville Road, south of Pleasant Hill, in Section 31 Township 2, south Range 7, based upon a finding that the submitted final plat generally conforms to the requirements of the city's code and ordinance, subject to the conditions in 1 through 10.
Second. Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartz?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashaw?
Aye.
Motion to approve this item passes. The next item is PL 1940, Delta Landing Commercial Subdivision, Phase 6. Request for final plat approval of Delta Landing Commercial Subdivision, Phase 6, one lot, 1.33 acres. The subject property is located on the west side of McEnville Road, south of Pleasant Hill Road. Subject property is currently zoned PUD. Nick Krugan, Silver Link representing the owner. Ms. Duggan, Duggan, would you present the planning staff reporting comments?
Yes, sir, this is Delta Landing, Phase 6. It's similar to what we just heard. This is a 1.33 acre lot, zoned planned unit development. Again, the Delta Landing development, you guys are very familiar with that. The proposed subdivision conforms with the preliminary approval. Decision tonight will be heard by the mayor and Board of Aldermen on the 21st. And I believe Mr. Alex is representing that as well.
Any questions for Ms. Duggan? All right, applicant, please, come forward, state your name and address.
Alex Gagné, 1058 Greenwich Drive, Hernando, Mississippi. If y'all have any questions, let me know.
Any questions for him? Thank you. Anyone support against this item? All right, is there a motion to approve, deny, or table this item?
Make a motion to grant final plat approval for Delta Landing, Phase 6, commercial subdivision consisting of one lot of 1.33 acres, west of McEnville Road, south of Pleasant Hill, in Section 31 Township 2, Range 7, based upon a finding submitted plat generally conforms to the requirements of the city's codes and ordinances, subject to conditions 1 through 10.
A second?
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartz?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashaw?
Aye.
Commissioner C.
Motion to approve this item passes.
Chairman, we also had the Tillman PUD zoning that was advertised for tonight's meeting that was withdrawn by the applicant, so I just wanted to make that yes.
Is anybody here for that? The Till... ...and rezone? You understand what she was saying?
The applicant requested to withdraw the application. They are planning to do some revisions on it and bring it back to us. It will be re-advertised, and notices will be sent out again once the application has been submitted back to us.
Going from C2 zone to PUD, is PUD making it like a residential?
That will all be within their documentation for their request. So some Planned Unit Developments are strictly commercial, some are McDuke's. So once they have their documents finalized to us, that will be available.
But part of a... I will say, the part of a PUD is their whole plan has to be laid forth at time for approval, just like, just say, for instance, Delta Landing. Development's going on now, their whole plan, their whole design, their whole concept, like, all the roads, all with the buildings and everything, all that has to be laid out in detail when they submit the application.
Well, they did have residential, it was commercial and residential in this. It was both. I'm referring to the... What they had, what they withdrew.
Well, if you guys are within the 500-foot radius, a notice will be sent out. Did you receive a notice this time? Okay, so... Okay. So you'll receive a notice advertising and letting you know when the... When the application will be... And in the meantime, once you receive that, you're welcome to come up and take a look at it at the planning office if you...
Because I mean, before, I mean, I'm all with him right now, what he originally planned, and we've complimented him however we could and helped him however we could.
Yeah, a lot of times, too, when they do something like that, they do reach out to the neighbors that are directly affected for feedback and input to try to... But I'm not... That was... Greg Smith may be able to tell you more about it, too.
All right, the next thing is the comprehensive plan. We're not...
Yes, so I put a copy of the proposed... Or the draft copy of the comprehensive plan in front of you guys. We were gonna have Mr. Bob Barber come in, present it, and just kinda explain what changes have been made, but in light of the situation, we've chosen to wait until Austin is back, and Bob will come back and kinda talk to everybody about it. But we wanted to get it to you, so you can look over it and make any comments, you know? So you'll have them ready at the meeting the next time.
Sounds good.
Motion to adjourn.
Yep.
Second.
Say it. All right, motion, I mean, meeting adjourned.